Okay, everybody, I think it's time for us to get started with the meeting tomorrow. I call this meeting the Divine Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Let the record show that trustees Kerry James, Chris Davis, Henry Moreno, and Nancy Pepper are present. No citizens communication, okay? The first thing we have to consider is to take possible action to adopt a resolution regarding public health-related school closure.
As you know, we had a situation with the city water supply. We were alerted early and in order to make the best arrangements for the community and the parents, we decided to call off school for the Monday that we were talking about. We're kind of glad that we made that decision early because it wasn't until about 11 o'clock at night that they were able to find a city that was able to let them have the parts to get it fixed. So as we do in normal school closures, we're asking that the board approve this resolution so that we can move forward.
Which will pay.
Yes, ma'am.
Which pays employees, and I think, yeah, that's important.
The teachers, it's the hourly employees that are most affected. The teachers are on a contract for 10 months.
And this is not a day that needs to be made up for the kids, right? All right, we need a motion, please.
To adopt the resolution regarding public health-related school closure.
Okay, I have a motion by Chris and a second by Kerry to approve the, adopt the resolution, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes 4-0. Next, it's considered to take possible action to approve donations from the athletic boosters. Ms. Shannon, are you bringing that?
There's many UIL requirements that are going to come up in the next year. One of them is a cooling station. It's over 13,000, and the booster club is willing to pitch in some of that. And so this donation approves that donation.
What exactly will they have in the cooling station, do you know?
It's going to be portable, we do know that, so they can use it at the practice field at the high school and then take it to the stadium during games. And we do know that. It kind of almost sounds like what you see when you're watching TV and I said, you know, they go into the little tents, kind of, but not. It's kind of like that, though, so where they can cool down, they can assess them and make sure they're okay to go back out or not.
Okay, I'll be here to do something like that, but...
And there's also the jacket.
Yeah, their softball jacket.
And what is it, the softball uniforms?
The jacket uniform?
Yes, I think they're already wearing them. And we've paid, and we've already paid for it, but they'd like to reimburse for that as well.
So that's two donations from them.
Yes, they're being very generous.
So I need a motion on that.
I request a bunch of good donations from athletic boosters as presented.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Henry and a second by Kerry to approve the donations from athletic boosters, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that passes 5-0. Okay, the TASB salary survey review. Mr. McLemore, how are you? Welcome again.
I don't know where the best place is to stand. Hey, good to see y'all again. Keith McLemore, the compensation consultant doing this work with y'all, I think, three years now with TASB, and basically I was brought back to do a full pay systems review, which is the more in-depth version of what we do kind of in between years. We do a maintenance project as well, it's not quite as in-depth. But I'm going to go through some slides here, feel free to ask questions. I love this stuff and it's easy for me to get, you know, and just talk a lot, so feel free to ask questions. So the data, the salary process, pay study process, I should say, starts off with data collection. It's a three-month process, right? It's, it takes a long time. But mainly, we have, we start with this kickoff meeting with district leadership. We say, hey, here's the timeline, here are the peer districts. What are your challenges? What do you want to focus on? And after that, we collect data, you know, things like current pay structures, any organization charts, that sort of thing. And then we do a lot of data cleaning. But what I get is, is that this market pay review process where I have the market data, because we do a survey that is the biggest I know of, maybe the only for public schools in Texas. And then I match your jobs with common job or the jobs in our survey. And if I don't have a match with our survey, I'll look at our private sector data. And I know you're kind of, you know, away from the San Antonio area, but it's like basically the metro area around San Antonio. And I don't use that pure market data for private sector. I like to average it with our survey data, if possible. Think of like a mechanic or an accountant, you know, speech-language pathologist jobs, so they can work in both areas, you know? All that to say, though, I realign your pay structures to market and calculate adjustments to employee pay. We use a lot of formulaic adjustments beyond just, hey, we want to do a 2% pay increase or a 3%. And we come in and check for a lot of other things. But like any system, it's not perfect. We encourage the district to review the final data to be sure that it looks good. I know it's a weird time right now with a legislative session going on, you know, you're waiting, everyone's waiting on the numbers, right? So we came up with two models based on just moving forward as if that wasn't going on, but I will be here this summer and next week, tonight, if you need, you know, once this stuff gets approved, I'll come back and re-look at things and work with the district to make it work with whatever the new mandates are with the spending regs. So this is the group of districts that we use to compare you to. There's never a perfect list, but generally speaking, we want to get people that did our survey. That's important. And geographic proximity is key to people that do hourly jobs. They might be willing to drive 30 minutes, maybe 40. Then with professionals, they're going to be willing to drive up to, you know, 45 minutes to an hour. And then your director jobs and hire, they might be willing to sell their house and move somewhere else. So with that being said, we like to have proximity. But for your director jobs and hire, we do use statewide data for districts of similar enrollment size. Ooh, touchscreen. That was cool. Whoa, that's like a magic trick. All right, sorry. You're showing my age, it's getting sad. But yeah, so that's what the asterisk means, is that we use statewide data because there is a really strong correlation with the market value for director jobs and hire versus, for the size, with the size of the district. These are these private sector data sources we use. One's called Comp Analysts, the other's Pay Factors. Don't have to use that a lot in a district your size, but we, like I said, we do like to bring it in on occasion for some jobs and average it with our survey data. But these are not self-reported, like a lot of places. Think about if you, your kids are looking for a job, you're looking for a job, you might go to one of those popular, like Monster.com. You can't really rely on what is on there. It's self-reported, you don't know if it's just base salary or incentives, bonuses, cellphone stuff. So these get the data directly from employers, so it's really reliable and that's why it costs a decent amount of money. Not to you, but to us. Let's look at your teachers real fast. I'm sure if you've seen me before, you remember this. Kind of a chart, this is just showing total experience for your current teachers. And we had 137 at the time of data collection. Don't care really glint a lot out of this, but basically the X-axis shows the experience up through 30-plus years. And the Y-axis is showing how many individuals you have with those levels of experience. And this can kind of, this can kind of help if you see like a cliff where you have a lot of people about to retire or close to retirement age. But the only thing I really see at this that's worth mentioning is the median or 50th percentile is at 13 years. Your average is 12.5. Median and average can, they're rarely the same, just from mathematical stuff, right? But the state average is around 11 and .5 years, so you're a little above with your experience, which most people tell me, oh, this is great because we want to keep people and we want to recruit people with experience. So that's, that's a good takeaway. And you've got some anomalies here that I think are interesting. So I look at this all the time, you have a lot of people with 15 years. Those kind of spikes are interesting to me, but not worth really talking about too much on that. All right, let's look at your new hires. So this is one of my favorite, this usually looks like Pac-Man, if anybody remembers Pac-Man. It's supposed to be a pie chart, but it's showing your, the experience of your current, or the people you hired new this year. And they all, based on the data we were given, had zero years of experience. So you hired seven people, they were all brand-new to the profession. Super common this year. It's just everyone is hiring people without a lot of experience or any experience. So this is what you're probably most interested in is how your teacher pay compares. We look at five benchmark years on your hiring schedule, 0, 5, 10, 15, and 20. And the idea is, hey, how does the client district's hiring schedule compare to the market? Blue is the, or is what your market values are. You can see you have a comfortable lead at year 0 and 5. You're right at market at year 10. And then you start lagging at years 15 and 20. There are different things that contribute to that. But some districts tell me they're really wanting to recruit strong early. Others tell me, man, I want to recruit at the higher end. But the majority of your talent pool is coming from this, you know, 0 to 10 area. But my advice is always try to get equally aligned with market across all of these five benchmarks. So, you know, people with 20 years are being, you know, they, you don't want them lagging market and potentially going looking for another job. So it's good to align all 20 years here. And of course, that means it's going to cost more money to do so. The legislative, you know, the, what we're seeing with the House Bill 2 is they're going to prioritize years 5, 5 through 10, and then 10 and up. But, and I've had a board member say, well, that should mean we're going to increase our competitiveness there. But no, it's just the whole, the whole floor, there's a ceiling, whatever you want to call it. Everyone's going to move equally up. So you're going to have to do stronger increases or extra adjustments to get aligned with market in years 15 and 20. You can see, you get a better picture of how far away you are from market on this slide. So 0, 5, 10, 15, 20-year columns. And you can see you're 840 above market at year 0, 465 above at year 5. And you're pretty much right at market at year 10, but you can kind of go out, year 20, you're almost 3,000 below market there. So, you know, that could take, in a normal year, you know, let's say the market shifts 2% and you want to just match market with a 2% pay increase, you know, you're probably, probably going to need somewhere along the lines of 3, 4% above that to get years 20 and higher better aligned to market. You know, that, that's going to be in like the $4,000, $5,000 range. The new data point out here is the average salary, which wasn't represented. So you're $778 above market there. And that's, you might be thinking, well, our salary schedule is weaker at those years. Why are we strong there? And that's because you're above average for experience. So that just makes sense mathematically that you have more people than the typical district around you and their salaries are higher. You can see these percentages, you know, theoretically, a district wants to match market, which means you're going to be around 100%. Some districts tell me they want to lag market, they want to be up in the 98% range. Others, very few, but I do have some that say we want to lead the market. They want to be like in the 105% range. But typically, you know, you're, you're right where you want to be. You're within about 2% of market except for that year 20. You'll never be perfectly aligned forever, you know, it's always, it's always a moving target. Quick peek at your add-on stipends for teachers. Typically, think of shortage areas and a master's degree, that's the way I think about it. And you can see Divine has that second column there, is where your values are. Size can influence some of these to some degree, but generally speaking, you know, if, if, what I like to point out is how many districts report these stipends. To me, that is a good indicator of what's really needed in your area. And it really varies around the state. I'll see bilingual being the $8,000 range in some places, and all 13 districts might offer it. And in others, you know, maybe two special ed, general resource, everyone does high needs. It's kind of interesting seeing how that varies, but, you know, that's why I encourage you to look at how many of your peers are offering things if you're lagging to see if you really need to like do anything. Like here, bilingual, Divine isn't offering that, and that could be, you know, based on programs and other things. But the market value's 3,000, and 7 to 13 are offering that. So that might be something for your experiencing difficulty, you might consider offering if you need a stipend for that. But otherwise, you can see you're right at market for special education high needs, more or less about 250 below. General resource, a little behind, or actually $1,500 behind. And 1750 behind in secondary science, 2,000 below secondary math, and right at market for master's degree. Other pay groups, so basically what's going on here is you have exempt broken up into three groups. The exempt are all paid via one structure. And your non-exempt jobs are all paid via another structure. Actually, two other structures, one for these two and one for auxiliary. But for your exempt jobs, you can see there's employee pay comparison averages to market. The pay grade midpoints are compared. And the reason that's important is because when you adopt a market-based pay system, the midpoints that should reflect the average market value of the jobs within them. So if I have custodian, child nutritional worker at pay grade 1, then in that market value is $18 an hour, $15, the midpoint, I want to match that market. And that's why it's important to keep an eye on these because if your midpoints are behind market, because you're calculating, at least the idea is to calculate increases off of your midpoint, like 2% of my midpoint per rated for my hours or days, then you're giving, if you're below market for your midpoints, you're giving weaker than market increases, which is going to cause you to lag over time. But good news is, is, and I think y'all have a report, I did, it was more of a draft report. The last page has a real interesting breakdown of how, what your midpoints look like after adjustment. And I get them all up over 100% on average, so that is getting fixed, or adjusted, I should say. I promise I'll come back to this, but just the pay grade minimums. Those are really key for jobs where people are maybe online, you know, they're wanting to know right away, what's the starting rate, you know, before they might apply. So you're a little, you're right on 99% for clerical para, but instructional support, these are like your aides, that's 6% below. Auxiliary, 10% below. You're always going to be chasing an auxiliary, it's hard to stay. That's just a fast-moving group. But like I was saying before, we're, that's the easy part, is for me to get your structures aligned. But pay might take longer just because it's just expensive, right? Employee pay, central admin, 4% below market. Campus admin is currently 2% on an annual basis. And I don't always do this, but I knew it'd be a smaller kind of group, but I could talk about it. That little hat thing, you can see down here, there's, you have some jobs where the duty days vary by more than five days from market. And when I adjust for that, for just those jobs, that comparison actually goes up to 101% for, those are campus principals, the APs, right? So their comparison actually is about 3, you know, 3% better than that if you get a little more granular. But the angle is 2% below. Professional, 6%, these are going back accountants, coordinators, instructional coordinators, specialists, et cetera. Pay is 6% below market, but again, there, when I factor in some of the jobs have duty days where they're working basically less days than the market median days, that means their daily, on a daily rate basis, their comparison is better. That's what's going on because they're working fewer days. And so they go from 94% to 97%. So it's a, a long way of saying that these comparisons are a little better than they actually look when you get a little more granular. Clerical, care professional, 2% below market. Those are admin assistants, accounts payable clerks, et cetera. Instructional support, classroom aides, special ed aides, 6% below market for pay. That's a really hard one to catch up with just because so many other, you know, those jobs can transition pretty well into, you know, the, the experience and skill set to go over and make more potentially in, you know, bank environment and some, you know, like a Starbucks or something. Auxiliary is always hard to chase, post-COVID especially. But 9% below market for the pay, and then the midpoints are 14% below market. I wanted a lot of detail there, just hoping to kill you on that, sorry. You know, it looks like you have a lot of interest, I can see y'all are really interested. There's really more for y'all, I'm just... Let's talk about these recommendations. Again, understand you're going to wait to do stuff most likely until you know what the cards are. But this is standard for every district I work with. Implement the new pay structures that are better aligned with market, that include strong starting rates, midpoints, and realign the market. So that's pretty easy stuff. Recommendation 2, adopt a general pay increase or GPI to maintain market position. Like I said previously, this was, we go into this not knowing what's going to happen. So it's status quo, so a 2% and a 3% pay increase. The idea, or Model 1 is a 2%, Model 2 is a 3% for all jobbers. And, you know, it's, it's key to point out that the idea is all continuing teachers would get the same increase amount, which is based off of 2% or 3% of the market rate for teachers, right? And so that, that's kind of a key takeaway. The other key takeaway I mentioned earlier, other non-teacher, their, their pay increase is calculated as a percent of their pay grade midpoint. Right, so that's recommendation 2. This is, I always wonder if I'll be able to show this, but because y'all have the, the lag at year 20, in these models I put together, I said, okay, let's throw an extra anywhere from $400 to $1,500 at these higher years to try to get you, this pointer doesn't work on the new touchscreen, which kind of stinks. But I just want to show you the green line, kind of, if you follow that. The extra adjustments get you closer to market out on that end. But just kind of keep in mind, the blue line is this year's data, it's not next year, right? The blue is going to shift up, if it's like House Bill 3 in 2019, it went up 7% in one year, teacher pay jumped up, you know? So all y'all would kind of equally go up, but I did put together a schedule that had extra dollars to try to get those years closer to market. That's Model 1. Model 2, just the line goes a little higher. All right, recommendation 3 is really standard for the most part, but there are recommendations for adjustment to address other issues. If someone is below the minimum, because I raised those structures up, we're going to get them not only to the minimum, but we're recommending getting them to 1% above the minimum to have a little, just a hair of space between a new hire that came in with the same experience. Strategic adjustments is a fancy way of saying if you're low to market based on a formula, it's a formulaic approach. Oh, I just turned this off. I touch it again to make it work? I do my I Dream of June. Sorry, y'all. Let me go get my A-track out of my car. Thank you, everyone. Wish I had a promo gift to give you. Strategic, I'm going to stand closer to you. The strategic adjustments, basically, like I said, there is an extra, that is, gives low, jobs are low to market, an extra 1% of midpoint, to move them a little closer to market value. Teacher pay equity adjustments is a formula that says, okay, if you're in the teacher career path, counselor, AP, principal, are you making at least as much as you would on a daily rate basis with the same degree if you were still teaching? And if not, how much money do you need to get you equal to that? And so that is like a catch-up, it's to get you at least to what you would make as a teacher. So you're not creating a roadblock to people wanting to leave the classroom and go to administration. Placement scale adjustments, the idea is think of a teacher hiring schedule for non-exempt folks. It's basically aligning pay with experience for bus drivers, custodians, et cetera. You still have a pay grade, but within the pay grade, you have this, this higher, this placement scale to spread people out based on experience. All right, so let's get to the cost. Worth pointing out that this is just based on not knowing what's going to happen at the legislature, just status quo kind of stuff. But you can see the different structures, the four structures I've rebuilt or realigned for y'all. The general pay increases, that's easy math, right? I already told you how to do that. If you're doing it at home, it's about $289,000 for the general pay increase. The adjustments, you can see there's about, you know, to fix, not totally fix your schedule, but get it better aligned, it's about another $49,000. The adjustments for AP, you can see running under $10,000. But where you're seeing a lot of extra adjustments are in these hourly groups. And remember, those are the weakest to market of all, the ones for the most part. And you can see, you know, adjustments to the minimum and placement scales are actually more expensive than just the general pay increase. So, you know, if this is a 2%, and that's more than that, it's really like you'd be giving about a 5% increase to these groups, just based on these figures. And so the final takeaway cost on this would be about $431,000 or 3.1% budget impact. Model 2, or is the 3%. And here, the math is, is pretty similar. It's just you'll notice because the increase, the general pay increase is stronger, the adjustments go down just a hair. There are $141,000 in adjustments here, $121,000, so the adjustments go down about 20K because the pay increase is more. So that's a 3.9% budget impact, or about $549,000. All right, so bye. Any questions? Was that good, huh? Okay. Well, these two know where to find me.
It was just that much to try to take in right now.
Yeah, I know you all had a lot going on. I felt kind of bad coming out because I know you all got more on your mind.
This is important.
Well, I mean, it is important, not more on your mind, but you know, I mean, it's like a lot of balls in there. That's what I meant to say. All right, well, thank you for having me out, and this is where you can reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we just have to figure out where we're going to get the money, huh?
Okay, that being said, here we go with budget workshop number 2. All right. All right, going back to the session. What has happened since our last meeting is SB 2 has passed. The governor signed it Saturday. That is for vouchers. What we are looking for is HB 2. And the people in my world are getting a little bit nervous because it's not really moving. We did get an email today. I'm not saying one way or another, but they encourage you to contact your senator. Ours is Pete Flores, to get this thing kind of moving, kind of give them a nudge. It's out of the House, but we, in the Senate, is where we need some nudging. And they certainly like to listen to other elected officials. So giving a quick call or email in the next couple of days could really impact if this moves along. This is the one that includes adjustments to the basic allotment. And I'll show you in a few minutes how it will impact our budget. We got preliminary values last week, yay. It was pretty typical. It was back to pre-COVID, back to pre-audits and the property values and all that. We have one side versus the other. It went up about $60 million, which is typical. See, the bottom line is we'd get what we usually do, about just under $400,000 additional dollars in taxes, tax collections, and that's pretty typical. It usually covers the raise. So we're kind of back to normal on that. You do see a drop in the INS side. We should be able to reduce that tax rate a penny or two now that we're in the bond and we're settled and moving forward. And here we go. Omar did give us a template with HB 2, but there's many, many people saying, adopt at current law, adopt at current law, especially if they haven't made any decisions and they'll go into special sessions. But when you run the difference between current law and the runs with HB 2, it's over $1.5 million that HB 2 would bring us. So again, I encourage you, one way or the other, to contact your, your senator, Pete Flores, and encourage that it would really help districts like us. I have a love-hate, wouldn't we do TASB surveys, Keith? Don't get mad. I love it because he does all my work and he saves me about a month's worth of work calculating all the salaries, but I would have had it done in February and now we have. And we're having to wait on him. So I'm only going to show it to you by object code, not down by function. And when we look at that, our revenue on current law would go up about just over a half million, half million above $600,000. But you see the bottom line, a deficit of $5.4 million. I think I hit a record this year on my first run, over 5.4. But I'm going to show you what that includes. With HB 2, that would just take it down a million. So what is in that deficit? One is the difference in the revenue we'd get in state aid. The other things are, Dr. Grandjean and I are looking... revenue we'd get in state aid. The other things are, Dr. Grandjean and I are looking at the second model that was presented by TASB, the more expensive one, the one that cost over $556,000. I'm going to show you in a minute how HB2 will add even a little bit more to that, that that won't meet HB2 specs if it does pass. We'd have to add another $181,000 to this $556,000. Another reason why we're going to go for the higher one versus the lower one. There's not that many additional staff. And so that's not going to cost a whole lot. The tennis courts are in here, the softball upgrades, the lines in green, the additional bond projects and the buses you have committed to. And so those two lines are for sure thing. The other ones are up for discussion. The $40,000 in furniture, 500 new Chromebooks, the tech SUV and the district SUV. And so a couple of things on here. The furniture right now, I did talk about kind of rolling out a furniture plan and doing a campus a year. What this $40,000 includes is the elementary and intermediate were more specific in their budget meetings. And intermediate was desk and chairs for students. And the elementary had some tables and rugs and some office furniture. And so that's what that $40,000 is. The 500 Chromebooks, I've been, Jesse and I went back and forth many times today on this, on the Chromebooks. And so during COVID and Esther and everything else, we bought, you know, everybody a Chromebook. But that was five years ago already. And so they don't last very long. And so a lot of them are already out of date. The ones at Gomez's campus were actually converted, laptops that were converted to Chromebooks that don't actually have the correct plugs. And another big thing right now is when they're testing, it needs to be able to fit with the audio systems and it doesn't. And if Mike wants to touch on that again.
Yeah, we struggle with, some of the ports are already kind of worn out. And a lot of the new headphones don't have the same kind of jacks that they were, that those Chromebooks came out with four years ago or five years ago we got them. So we test them obviously before we test, but it's a big undertaking.
So high school's really the only one one-to-one. The other three campuses have class sets. So they use them in class during the day for different activities. High school does get to take theirs home. There's conversation, they usually get a new one when they come in as a freshman, that maybe we should wait till maybe they're seniors, that that's not quite working out. And so the 500 would be for the new senior class. And for the elementary, a group, 175 at the elementary and 175 at the intermediate, to update those that aren't working, especially in the tested areas. And so I tried to cut that down some today, but I don't think I was very successful on that one. The tech SUV, they do have something. They're located at the old church right now, at the parent place. And so they do more traveling than they used to. They have an old van. And you might see it when you're driving around town. It's pretty beat up. But if we did give them something different, it might be something similar to those small kind of minivans that we're buying for, that we bought for child nutrition and we bought in the custodial area. But it would definitely have to be something that's covered because we talked about, do we have an extra truck with the turnover and maintenance? But they really need something that's covered. A truck's not really going to work for this.
Do you have a decent truck? If there's a cab on the back, if you want, everybody's in a truck, but then we, as we talked about that earlier today.
Yes. They're all accounted for. I think a previous employee didn't do a lot of driving. And the newer employee, they're splitting up so they can cover more ground more efficiently. And then we always like to throw in a district SUV because we have travelers every day, all day long on those weekends. We could always use an additional SUV. I thought maybe we finish these bus grants this year into next year is when we get the lift, it's on order. And then the following year, for sure, pit it in the '26, '27 budget. Candy, don't throw anything at me.
Our newest, because our newest suburban is a 23.
The newest one is a 22.
And how many do we have?
We have five. And all of them that that, one are over $100,000 now.
And if we did get that district SUV, one of those five, we'd probably shift to the technology. And then when you're talking about $5.4 million, what's another $75,000? Lots of things to talk about. We're getting, I know Dr. Grandjean's still working with different companies, getting quotes on the tennis courts and the softball upgrades, seeing how we can do that in the different ways.
And several of these are one-time purchases.
Yes.
So it's not like it's going to carry them right here.
Right. A little bit, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask about the buses. We're on the hook for that right now. But are we caught up after this? Will we be able to skip a couple of years before we buy a bus for one year?
Some people's request would not be that. We could go at least a year without that.
So I know we've been buying.
Couldn't go too. At some point, we would need to get back.
And we're recouping some of that money.
You know, Candy wouldn't like that plan. But at some point, we may have to go, could skip two years and then get on a one bus per year. Sometimes people do two buses, but now at $142,000 apiece, right?
$150,000.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you could survive almost, I mean, if we had to, based on the deficit that we're at, we could survive on one a year after a certain point, or one every other year to get by.
And is that the cost after we recruit or before?
This is before.
So how much would we recruit?
We'd get 35 on each one?
Do right now?
We'd get 35 back?
No, closer to 80.
Yeah, a couple of them we got. So these, this bus grant that we did, we, it's almost like.
Three for it.
Buy one, buy two, get one free.
Sure. Yeah, no, total sense. I just knew we talked about once we got, like these next two, we might have.
Because as of, the new ones that we got, the next oldest one that we have is what?
2007.
Yeah, 2007. But we got rid of some, like.
Million.
But one of the favorites is.
93.
Uh huh.
But your point is exactly right. Once we get here, get on a program, because at some point, kind of, in low gear.
But that number would really reduce to like 140.
Right.
So that's good news.
Yeah, I was just trying to think long-term. Like, we had talked about not having to do it every year for so many years. So if we're doing two buses a year.
Two buses a year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, where does that HB2 revenue go? Because yes, they give us more money, but they always have those streams attached. So I wanted to show you that. And these are kind of the allotments. So $600,000 will go to the regular program. That's great. That has a little bit more leeway how we can spend it. The small and midsize, $53,000, again, that doesn't have too many streams. Sped would get another additional $151,000. We spend well over that allotment already. And so that really wouldn't make that big of a difference. Dyslexia, $5,800. State comp ed, another $100,000 there. Down to bilingual, another, just almost $4,000. CTE would be another $100,000. That would be nice, especially as we're getting these pathways created and set. That would help that a lot. The early ed, just over, just under $15,000, another $2,500 for GT. And $4,000 would go to CCMR. Safety, they're still, they're not talking a whole lot about it in HB2, but there are other places where they increase that safety allotment. So again, what that means is in my account code, these allotments are tracked with these numbers at the end of the account line. And that's actually one of the first things that the auditors do is make sure you spend your 55% or 100% of these allotments to, so they're spent for what they were intended for. We couldn't spend these for some of those items that were on the previous slide. Additional personnel, like I said, there wasn't that many. Half cosmetology seems like 90%. The additional nurse at the high school is pretty close. The middle school ELAR, not quite sure on that one still yet. And the fourth grade teacher, probably not on those that we asked. Do y'all have any questions on the staffing? I want to go back to HB2 again, on the salary increases. So we picked, or we're looking at the one that's more expensive. And this is the breakdown with teachers, professionals, paraprofessionals and auxiliary in the total. If we get the salary increase, how that, if on HB2, the difference in this year's funding and next year's funding would be just 1.5 million. 40% of that has to go to salary increases. Of that 40%, 75% goes to teachers, librarians, counselors and nurses. And then 25% of the other 40% goes to all others. And so that would have us add another $181,000 to the teacher block. But a little side note, librarians, counselors and nurses are not on the teacher scale. They're on a different table. And so by doing that, it's going to skew those tables. And we'll have to adjust those as well as all this happens. So the sooner the better. They get HB2 out. It's very similar to HB3 back in 19. And where they pick, previously, they wanted five to six. Now they're looking at 10 to 15 years where they want to increase more than the others. So we'll just see. But like I said, the sooner the better on all of us. But even if we go with the high, we're still going to have another increase. But it'll be not paid for, but the increase in funding will certainly help offset that increase. Our outlook, I think I have six years on here, even though I say five. So this year, at our last budget amendment last week, we still had, we're looking at closing the year at $2.9 million. That would bring our fund balance at the end of the year to $12.6. With this deficit, this deficit looks different because part of the deficit is down here. The 3.9 isn't the 5.4 because the 4.5 is included in here. And you take out your requirements. At the end of next year, we'd have 2.7 on top of the three months operating expenses. So a total of 8.7. Hopefully, if HB2 passes, it'll kind of calm things down. We'll finish up the bond projects. We might be able to adopt next year without a deficit. Wouldn't that be wonderful? And then maybe even potentially look at, okay, where we're at, what we've done, and maybe potentially look at a bond in '26 or '27. And I threw this in here just for your fun, but this is the template where it compares. This year, I tried to turn the page. I couldn't. So it continues down here. Current year versus next year, current law versus next year HB2. But I summed it up mostly, when you're looking at it, goes into those allotments. That's not a fun one. That's just. So this is short because like I said, a lot of it, 80% of it goes to salaries. We really need to get those numbers now. What Keith will do, he'll actually give us a spreadsheet with each employee's calculations and adjustments. April and I will put it into a center and then we'll be able to run it and have good numbers by functions for you at the next budget workshop.
Is there anything you need out of us right now?
If y'all have a for sure yea or nay on some of these items?
So the number two option, that raises the paras and auxiliary hire. Does that benefit us? If they pass the bill, that money's already there? Or am I not following that correctly? Because if they pass it, it's going to go up again? But you can only put it on teachers? So does that?
With the current budget, we would dip into fund balance in order to do the salary increases.
Right.
If HB2 passed, it would give us the money. We wouldn't have to dip into as much fund balance to do the raises. That didn't answer your question. That's good again.
Would it cover all of the, HB2 cover all of the raises that we need to get?
Yes.
So we could break it down as if like, if we just, so the bolded letters, TASB salary increases, if we get no HB2, costs us $556,000. If the legislative salary increases pass and we go with section two, option two, we're at 625, but it really only costs us $181 instead of $565. So what kind of cross on our finger, I mean, we hope that it happens because then we get the best of both worlds and costs us a fifth or a fourth of what.
And I usually bring the salary tables to the April meeting. And I didn't because of this. And we're waiting on it. And it might not even be till June, until we actually bring the tables. And we have a more set system.
A question that a lot of people would ask would be, okay, well, what if HB2 passes? Can't we just go with the 627? And so everybody will get some pay raises. But then if you don't, that's where he talks about the lines all stay the same and they don't fix what's happening with Northside or Somerset or whoever we're behind. It's like, we're running in a race and they just give everybody another 20 feet head start before we begin. Instead of with this, we actually move our starting line up 20 feet and everybody hopefully doesn't move further. I mean, because last year, whenever we made the huge play, huge play on the teachers, then they all turn around in 15 days and start back up with us.
Yes.
So it's.
Another reason we're holding out.
Strategic, yes.
I have one question on the SUV. Did I understand right that if you buy the district SUV, that one of the ones we have would go to the tech?
We've talked about that, Candy. Is that the plan or no?
We can go either way with it.
So that would eliminate the $40,000 for the tech SUV?
Yes.
And it would still give us the five to use within the district.
Right.
On the Chromebooks, I was thinking even if we did the senior class, would 175 at intermediate get you through testing? And then elementary teachers, is there really a need for 175 new devices?
I mean, mine are fine.
Mine are fine.
So I guess.
I mean, there's maybe one or two of the kids that broke off from their jackets.
But I mean. I have 20 kids and all of them are working as of right now. So I don't know what teachers are left, like who has more problems.
So we could cut that down 150 or so.
Every day.
If 175 works for, would get.
I mean, I would replace some of our clock. We have 20, at least 20 classrooms, core classes that we tested, with 25, 22 to 25 kids a class. So 175 doesn't really.
Yeah, I wrote this in there.
We have seven, seven, six, plus our small group administration. So.
And your classes are big.
Fourth grade's going to be 160 something next year.
Yeah, he has a big group.
23, 24 kids of kiddos.
And just for context purposes, Chromebook and a license is about $250,000.
But I will say, I mean, it's pretty critical of what we're trying to do, like the state assessments all online, most of the accommodations that we put in for our special education kiddos are, you know, speech to text. Things. I mean, it's about as critical as anything else left on there, the Chromebooks. We're not, we can't access the material the way that it needs to be. Then it's going to be tough for the kids to.
Not elementary, they don't start testing on Chromebooks. It's just. I mean, that's just part of the assessments, but they do other things. Testing is just part of the assessment.
I think for sure we need to replace the ones that we need for testing and take care of that campus, whether we are able to do at other campuses or not.
More accurate count, if that would help. More accurate counting, that would help.
Yeah. And the ones at the high school are going to the senior class because just want to give them.
There's a lot of third years, more costly, and that was recommended today, just thought. There's a lot of damage right there for the.
Yeah. I'm sure.
And so the next one, I'll have it broken down by function. And hopefully have an answer in HB 2. Because we're really close to, to breaking even, if you know. The deficit is the majority of these projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you take out those extra projects we have going, and they're the one-time projects, but so many of them, we've waited so many years to do, we just need to bite the bullet and do it. Okay, anybody have any other questions?
Or anything else you'd like to see at the next one?
I think you're doing good. Thank you. All right, is there any other thing to be, that we need to bring tonight? Be really ready to adjourn. Okay, I'll take Alia. Motion by Henry and a second by Alia to adjourn all in a bit of a short time. Thank you. Thank y'all all for coming. We know this can be kind of boring, but it's important.